We've all heard plenty about critical race theory and how it's impacting schools across the nation. My next guest is a mom who was not willing to sit on the sidelines, learn about a person who stood up, fought back, and kicked the system in the teeth. Welcome to another episode of Conversations with Dr. Carol Swain. You know, this is the show where we talk about anything and everything that's on my mind. And if you've followed me over the past year or so, you know that critical race theory comes up again and again and again. It doesn't seem willing to go away. My guest today is a mom who has made a difference. Her name is Hannah Smith. She lives in Texas, and she's one of these people that decided not to sit on the sidelines. I want you to hear from her what got her involved in politics because she now holds a school board position. So Hannah, welcome to Conversations.
Thank you so much, Carol, for having me. It's great to be with you.
So you live in South Lake, Texas? Is that right?
Yes, I do, with my husband and four kids.
And what are the ages of your children?
My youngest is going into second grade, and he's a boy, John Henry. And then George is going into sixth grade. Lucy is going into eighth grade, and Gladys is going into 10th grade.
And are they in public schools?
They are. They are all students at Carroll ISD.
Well, that's interesting, too, because a lot of people have decided, you know, that to either homeschool their children, pull them out of public schools, send them to private schools. And I know that if you wanted your child in a private school, your children could be there. So tell me, what got you involved in this battle to save our public schools?
Well, our family moved from the Washington DC area about two years ago, and we chose South Lake because it was such a conservative town. We wanted to raise our family in a very conservative place, a place that reflects our own values. And so we chose South Lake. It's one of the sort of politically reddest areas of North Texas. And right after we moved here, COVID hit and the shutdown happened. And a lot of families were home, looking over their kids' shoulders, onto their computer screens, and seeing what was happening in the classroom. And it was around that same time that our school district decided to try and pass a cultural competence action plan, which was a 34-page plan that sought to inject into our district a lot of critical race-type components to it. Microaggression tracking and punishing, audits of our curriculum, metric for teachers to be evaluated as to how woke they are, to see if they can keep their job, and a lot of other things that were just really frightening to a lot of people. And so our community banded together, and we fought back.
You certainly did. And you're a bit too successful, be it for the city council, excuse me, I'm getting this wrong, you're on the school board. And is that something that you saw coming for yourself? Like, if I were to look at your future, you're an attorney as well, right?
I am an attorney, but I had never thought that I would run for political office ever. I actually practiced religious liberty law, and so I have defended a lot of religious groups in courts at the Supreme Court. And so I did not have any aspirations to run for any elected office. But at the time, you know, we were battling against this plan, and two seats came open on the school board in our town. And I thought, you know, if not me, who? And if not now, when? And so I just threw my hat into the ring, and here I am.
And I'd like for you, too, also, to go into a little bit more detail about some of the things that were happening in the public schools. Because you, Hannah, came to my attention through other people that were involved in the battle. There's a man by the name of Glenn Story who started Patriot Mobile. And I know that he and other parents were really worked up about what was happening in the school system. And so just give our viewers a little bit more detail about what you saw as a parent when your children came home.
Yeah, so Glenn and Jenny Story are absolutely wonderful allies that we have here in South Lake, Texas. They were part of a PAC that was formed last fall, the South Lake Families PAC. And the PAC was formed so that we could raise money and fight back against the CCAP. And we did. We raised a lot of money. We organized into committees. I was helping out with the legal committee, and others were helping out with communications and with grassroots organization. And we really started just banding together. We met before school board meetings to write up talking points and to talk about what we were going to say. And then we showed up in significant numbers at every single school board meeting. And we told them why we didn't want the CCAP, and we pushed back. So it was a really effective strategy. And a lot of parents were just seeing, you know, things creeping into our curriculum, teachers injecting things into their classroom that they didn't like. And so that really motivated them to push back against it.
Well, I mean, that is, I mean, I think what you did in Texas can be a model for other parent groups across the country, because they're all trying to figure out what to do. And I personally believe that COVID was a blessing in disguise because it allowed parents to see for the first time what was taking place in the schools, because they were able to see that children's lessons and to overhear conversations that maybe would have been off limits before.
I totally agree. And, you know, a lot of people in our community would readily admit to you that they had sort of fallen asleep, you know, that they had just assumed that our award-winning schools were going along just as great as they had been for decades, and that they really didn't need to pay attention to what was going on in their kids' classrooms, and they didn't need to show up at school board meetings. But once COVID hit and they sort of saw what was going on, and the CCAP plan was presented to the school board, they realized that they couldn't sit back anymore, that they had to stand up and they had to participate. And so I think it was really a great example of what a community can do when they educate themselves and when they stand up and make their voices heard.
And what was it about the CCAP program in particular that Gavin and I so many people?
Well, I think it was actually objectionable to a lot of different parts of our community. You know, I mentioned before that they wanted to track microaggressions, and microaggressions, as you know very well, Carol, are defined as, you know, intentional or unintentional slights that are completely defined subjectively by the victim. And so, you know, harmless things such as, you know, what are you eating for lunch? If you're asking someone from a different culture, or where's your family from? If you're asking someone, immigrant, you know, those sorts of things could be deemed a microaggression, and you could have a student punished for those things. And people just thought that that was going a little too far. You know, we want our kids to have free speech. We want them to be able to communicate with each other. We want them to be able to ask each other about their backgrounds and their differences. And so, you know, I think that was a big part of it. Also, the audits, they wanted to do equity audits of our entire curriculum and reshape our award-winning curriculum in the guise of equity and critical race theory. And they also wanted to do audits of our student clubs. And here in Texas, we have really robust student clubs, and some of them are religious. So the high schoolers can form their own religious student clubs and meet on campus and do Bible study, or, you know, the Fellowship for Christian Athletes, or the Muslim Student Club. And they wanted to audit those student clubs to make sure that they were sufficiently culturally competent. And if they weren't sufficiently woke, then there was a risk that they would be pushed off campus completely. So that was really shocking to a lot of people, that this plan wanted to so fundamentally alter our district.
Well, Hannah, we're going to take a break. And when we return, I'm going to talk a little bit about what critical race theory is and more about microaggressions, because a lot of people that are watching, they may not know what a microaggression is and political correctness and all that nonsense that were on the college campuses that are now in K through 12. So we'll be back after this word from our sponsor.
Conversations with Dr. Carol Swain is made possible by Cooper Steel, a family-owned business that provides the steel fabrications for some of the greatest buildings across the United States. 60 years ago, Kenneth and Fay Cooper founded their company in Shelbyville, Tennessee.
Cooper Steel believes in sponsoring Carol Swain because we believe, as she does, you build strong, you stand strong.
What started as a vision and now a nationally-recognized and operated company that remains true to its founders' Judeo-Christian values and principles. Cooper Steel is committed to excellence, responsibility, and community. Cooper Steel's motto is, "Build strong, stand strong." They treat their employees and customers like family. Thank you to Cooper Steel for standing strong with Conversations with Dr. Carol Swain. Learn more about our generous sponsor at coopersteel.com.
I'm back with my guest, Hannah Smith, and we're talking about South Lake, Texas, where she serves on the school board and how she got there. I want to say a little bit more about Hannah. She's a graduate of Princeton, and she was in the Woodrow Wilson School, and that's actually where I was tenured when I entered academia. We sort of overlapped a little bit, but we didn't know each other at the Woodrow Wilson School. And she has spent two decades involved in high-profile litigation, and she clerked for justice, or worked directly with Justice Clarence Thomas and Justice Samuel Alito. And she is an advocate for religious liberty. That's an impressive background.
Thank you so much.
So you are well-equipped for the school board.
Well, you know, it was really interesting, because a lot of people in our community said that God brought us together for such a time as this, and I really believe that that's true. You know, we formed this team of volunteers and community activists who each, in their own way, contributed to our success. We had moms who loved putting together videos, and we shot them out through social media to get our message across. We had other moms who were doing curriculum checks and helped us get brain pop out of our schools. And, you know, I had a legal background that helped us sort of articulate what the problems were constitutionally and what federal laws were involved that might be violated with the CCAP. And so each of us had our own gifts that we brought to the table, and it really formed a very strong team that we could push back with.
It just sounds wonderful. And I know, since you were a graduate of Princeton, or you are a graduate of Princeton, I know that CRT was big there, Critical Race Theory, in the 1990s. When I was there, I was a congressional scholar, and so I was not deep into it. And political correctness was not so bad at the university, as I recall. Your experiences would have been very different from mine, since you were a student. But let's talk about what political correctness is and microaggressions and implicit bias and some of those words that get thrown around in the debate. So let's start with political correctness and just how that, you know, impacts our society, because it seems like you had a lot taking place in your school system.
Yeah, well, I think it all comes together, right? It all is of a piece, right? It's all sort of part of this philosophy that we really don't want to allow certain ideas to be expressed. And if you take that viewpoint, that you're scared of ideas being expressed in the open marketplace of ideas, then you're really fundamentally against the search for truth. Because, as the Supreme Court has said over and over again in its free speech cases, we must have an absolute protection of free speech, obviously with certain exceptions. But that free speech allows all ideas to come into the marketplace so that people can choose which ideas are the strongest and which ones survive. Those are the best ideas, and those are the ideas that help us find truth. And so when you try and fundamentally alter people's ability to speak and you don't want to hear certain ideas, I think it really rubs people the wrong way, and people understand that that's just not fundamentally American. So political correctness is part of that, microaggression tracking is part of that, and a whole host of other mechanisms that seek to suppress speech.
Right, and, you know, microaggressions, you defined it briefly earlier, but it's a perceived slight. Think about that perceived slight. You know, maybe we're walking down the hallway, and I don't look you in the eye, and I'm offended because you, you know, maybe the person that's offended thinks it's because of their ethnicity or something about themselves, or maybe it's a male/female, and the male opens the door. He's holding the door open because he's a good southern gentleman, or he says, "Yes, ma'am." Someone could see that as a microaggression.
That's exactly right. And it's the subjectivity of it that is really scary, right? Because there's a fundamental tenet of our American legal system, and that is that you can't be punished for something that you haven't been given prior notice of. So you have to have known that something was wrong to actually transgress it. And so with microaggressions, that just goes out the window, right? Because nobody can give you a list of what could possibly subjectively be defined as a microaggression to someone anywhere in the world. And so that sort of due process notion of, well, that's not fair, we didn't get noticed that I was violating something, is, I think, what people fundamentally realize is that the root cause of why microaggressions are so bad.
Right, and they talk about implicit versus explicit bias, with implicit bias being hidden biases that, you know, you don't know about. And so a white person who says, you know, "I see, I don't see color, you know, I see everyone the same," and they may come from a biracial background, but it is assumed under critical race theory that if you are white, you have a property interest in your whiteness, you're guilty of racism, and therefore you define the meaning of words so that a white supremacist, like years ago, when I did my research, a white supremacist was a white person who believed that because of their race, they were superior to other groups. Well, in the world of critical race theory, any white person is seen as a white supremacist, and so it's a broad brush that, you know, that paints every white person as an oppressor, as a white supremacist, as a racist. White people are supposed to engage in anti-racist behavior, but we never hear that all of us, you know, should be engaged in anti-racist behavior, that if we want to talk about what it makes, what it takes to be a good American, and what it takes, you know, to honor our civil rights tradition and our Constitution, we should all be anti-racists.
Well, I think you're so eloquent when you talk about this, Carol, because this is your experience. And I think that it's been so interesting to hear people talk about this, because really what this anti-racist, critical race theory agenda boils down to is pitting people against each other based on the color of their skin. It teaches our children to hate one another because they are different from one another. And that's fundamentally at odds with what the focus of American education should be and always has been, which is to bring people together of different backgrounds and teach them the fundamentals so that they can run the American democracy in the next generation. And so if we just completely ignore the fundamental principles of American democracy and free speech and due process and freedom of association and freedom of religion and all of those things that make our country so great, then we are doing a grave disservice to the next generation.
You are absolutely correct. And we're going to go to another break, but when I return, I'm curious about your reception on the school board and just what you would like to see happen next.
Dr. Carol Swain's Be the People: A Call to Reclaim America's Faith and Promise, newly released in paperback and audio with a new introduction, is a challenge to all Americans. If you are serious about being the best citizen you can be, this is the book for you. From addressing moral relativism to reclaiming the future, you'll understand why Dr. Swain is one of the most relevant voices in today's culture war. Are you ready to reclaim America's faith and promise? Purchase at bethepeoplenews.com/books or wherever books are sold.
The Biden administration's executive order on immigration brings to the forefront one of the most volatile issues of our time. In this timely second edition of Debating Immigration, I join my voice to that of other experts to provide you with facts and information that will help you understand what is at stake for our nation. This edition offers 21 original essays that cover race, religion, economics, human smuggling, and civil rights.
Purchase at bethepeoplenews.com/books or wherever books are sold.
I'm back with my guest, Hannah Smith. Hannah, first of all, I applaud you for running for the school board, because part of my brand is be the people. And so you've actually shown others how to be the people.
Well, thank you so much. And I, you know, I truly believe that it took our entire community to win this race. You know, in January, when I filed to run as a next school board trustee, I just had incredible backing from this amazing community. We had people who were knocking on doors, people who were texting, people who were handing out flyers. We had people who were willing to talk to their neighbors, who set up 70 meet and greets for us over three months, where we met people from all over our community. We raised over $60,000 for a school board race, which is almost unheard of. And we had, you know, excellent support from the PAC as well. They sent out some mailers on our behalf, and we sent out our own mailers. I mean, we just really did everything we possibly could to get the message out, not only about our campaigns, but to teach the community and educate the community about why CCAP was so detrimental to our schools. And in the end, on May 1st, you know, we won 70 to 30, a 40-point win, which was a huge victory for us, and really an example, I think, to the entire country about what you can do when you band together.
And have you actually had school board meetings since your victory? Or were those began in the fall?
You're exactly right. We have had some meetings. The middle of May was when we were given the oath of office, and then we jumped right in that same night to our first school board meeting. And so we've had three since we were given our oath.
And would you describe them as positive? And what is the full size of the school board?
So there's seven members of the school board. We are a rather small district. We only have about 8,500 kids and about 1,200 staff. So we're pretty small in numbers, but we're ranked at the top of school districts for the entire state of Texas regularly, either one or two, first or second every year. So we're really well-known, and, you know, we set the bar really high for other school districts, which was another reason why we just couldn't let this plan go through, because that would set an example for all the other districts in Texas.
And as far as advice to people from other parts of the country that are dealing with these issues, what steps would you encourage them to take?
You know, first of all, I would encourage them to band together, to find out who else is like them, you know, find the like-minded volunteers and community members that they can count on to show up and to really do the work. So we started a Facebook group, a private Facebook group online, and we started posting, you know, articles and informational things on there. We hosted webinars to educate our community. Like I said before, the PAC formed some committees. And so really, just do things that will help educate your community and stand together. But you've got to show up at those board meetings, you've got to speak with information and facts so that you'll be heard. And then I would just encourage them to run for those open seats. I mean, I think people are really hesitant nowadays in our cancel culture society. They're worried about what's going to happen to them if they stand up and run, but you have to do it, because those seats are the most important way that you are going to effectuate change in the future for your district.
And, you know, I hear people who are afraid that the school system will retaliate against their children. What would you say to a parent, you know, that's holding back because they're afraid that their family will be singled out in some sort of way?
You know, I don't want to undercut those concerns at all. I mean, those are valid concerns, and certainly if you're in a district that's not as conservative as ours is, that might very well be a valid concern. But, you know, my experience has been that that has not been the case, that, you know, as a trustee, the district has really been very respectful of me and my family and my children. So that has not been my experience. But I will say that there have been members of our community that people have tried to dox them, people have tried to go to their employers and get them to lose their jobs. They've, you know, waged social media campaigns against me personally. And it's not fun to be on the other end of that, but at the same time, I knew that I was standing up for the side of truth, and that's ultimately what helped me get through it, because I had this huge community behind me, and I knew what we were doing was right. And so I think that helps you get through it.
I agree, because for myself, I feel like we had this one life to live, we ought to make it count, and it's not about us, you know, it's bigger than us. And you're using your gifts and talents to impact, you know, thousands of people, the whole nation, because this is a moment where we see how much school boards matter. We see what has seeped in to our K through 12 schools, and so it's like all hands on deck. Parents need to stand up, they need to be the people. And so I really applaud you for everything you've done. And I know it took an army, so you had an army. And one of the things I would say to people who are thinking about whether they should run for school board is that you do need to be part of a group, you know? Don't just jump out there by yourself. You need to meet with other people, and it should be a group decision which ones step out for a particular race, because you don't want to divide the vote yourself. You know, if there are two or three conservatives running, it may divide the vote, and no one wins. And so I think you have to be strategic and have a plan.
I totally agree with that. And, you know, that's what we tried to do. We tried to make it a clean race, you know, just two people in each race, and have very clear-cut debates about the differences in our ideologies and how we differed on policy issues. We had probably like four or five different forums where we answered questions from the public that were hosted by different organizations in our community, and it really showed you what the differences were between our different approaches. And ultimately, you know, I think that we won because we showed the community that we were willing to stand up for the fundamental philosophies of our country, and that is, you know, every individual counts, equal opportunity for everyone, dignity for everyone, and common humanity across race, right? I mean, we're for the fundamental principles that undergird the American democracy. And CCAP and critical race theory are a fundamental attack against those principles, and I think that's ultimately why we won.
Yeah, I think so, too. And one of the points that I make when I discuss what's happening in our schools is that we have civil rights laws. Some of them are state laws, some of them, you know, are federal. We had the Equal Protection Clause of the Constitution, and white people are protected against discrimination in the same way other groups are. And I frequently encounter white people who don't seem to know that civil rights laws apply to them and that they don't have to be silent if they're in a hostile work environment, or they're being singled out because of their race, or their children are being bullied in a way that creates a hostile learning environment. These are things that you don't have to take.
That's exactly right. And I raised that on multiple occasions, you know, that Title VI and Title VII protect against race discrimination for students and for teachers. So when, you know, our school district wanted to do these really invasive teacher trainings where they, you know, basically taught our white teachers that they were bad for being white, and that, you know, talked about white supremacy and white identity and white fragility and implicit bias and intersectionality, and asked them to, you know, name characteristics of white culture. You know, I thought those trainings, when I saw those slide decks, were fundamentally just an embarrassment, really, because you're not only saying that white people are bad, but you're saying that people of color are not able to stand on their own two feet and compete in the same way that white students are able to compete. And so when you say that characteristics of white culture include being on time and working hard and getting the right answer, well, you're saying that fundamentally, then, people of color aren't on time and don't work hard and, you know, can't get the right answer. And so I just think it's fundamentally a problem for both sides.
Well, I mean, I can say it for you, that critical race theory is racist, and it's harmful to racial and ethnic minorities, because it tells minorities that they are victims. It tells them that racism is permanent, it's systemic, and if something is permanent, there's nothing you can do about it. And what bothers me the most is the lowering of standards. And this whole idea about math being racist, that minority students should not be expected, you know, to speak in standard English. They are also allowed and being encouraged to resegregate. So many of our colleges and campuses, you don't just have separate graduations and separate dorms. There are some colleges and universities where you have separate segregated sections of some courses. So we have a resegregation taking place. They have abandoned the pursuit of a colorblind society. They don't want equal opportunity, they want equity, which means equal outcomes, and they rejected any notion of a meritocracy, which is an insult to every black person or every minority who's worked hard, played by the rules, been successful, and now, all of a sudden, we're told that we are incapable of doing what we have already achieved. We're incapable because of systemic racism. It's ridiculous.
I totally agree. And, you know, I also spoke a lot about what are the consequences of an equity plan? And if you look across the country, you can see in places like of an equity plan? And if you look across the country, you can see in places like, you know, Boston, and New York, and Chicago, and Seattle, gifted and talented programs are being canceled, because they claim that more white and Asian students are in them, and not enough Hispanic and Black students. And so they're just canceling gifted and talented programs in some of these areas, which is a real shame and a detriment to the picture of our kids' education.
Hannah, it's a disgrace, because they've always been racial and ethnic minorities in those programs, but maybe not at high numbers. But they were there for everybody. It was something to aspire to, but it's being taken away.
That's right.
We are at the end of the segment. Quickly, tell our viewers how they can reach you.
Sure. Well, my website is hannahsmith4cisd.com. So hannahsmith4cisd.com. And you can find my social media handles there, as well as my email to contact me.
Hannah, thank you so much for everything you're doing. And give my love to the people in South Lake, Texas. I'm looking forward to visiting at some point, because they have really set a high bar for the rest of the country.
Thank you for all you do, Carol.
Thank you.
For those of you who would like to know what exactly our children are facing in their education system, this is a must-read book. It will equip you and prepare you to make decisions about your child's health, about your child's education. So I want to encourage every one of you to grab a copy of Dr. Swain's book, and join with me and Carol on the front lines in this critical time to eradicate the liberal abduction of our children.
Thank you so much for tuning into another episode of Conversations. Wasn't Hannah Smith awesome? Don't we want more people like her to run for school boards all across the country? There's a lot we can learn from South Lake, Texas. Texas, I mean, they really, they got it going on in Texas. And make sure you share this show, and do what you need to do in your community, to make sure that our school boards are not controlled by teachers' unions and leftists.